Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to 2022, everyone. I hope everybody had a nice New Years. And that everybody's recovered from whatever festivities you got up to.
Sleep?
I got a lot of sleep.
It's good, very good. Uh, first item on the agenda is approval of the met. A motion to approve, motion in a second. All those in favor of approving the met signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. Uh, approval of the bills.
Everything looked good to me, so I'll make a motion to approve paying the bills.
The motion in a second to approve paying the bills. We'll call it.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Bolt?
Aye.
Lightfoot?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
And you did see the two bills from?
Well, I'm.
Financial reports.
Closing looks went good. New Year. Third over.
Very good.
Yep.
We have a motion to approve financial reports.
I don't think they approved.
Same.
Motion in a second to approve financial reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion is carried. Treasurer's checks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the judge's checks. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion is carried. Approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions, corrections to be made to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Same.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion is carried. Year-end budget amendments.
I have one question on that emergency manager.
He hasn't got any yet.
Do we need that money over there? Do we need to have that money to do?
Yeah, carryover.
Yep.
So which, which one are we looking at here?
Emergency manager.
Oh, that twenty-six thousand M? The actual spend versus budget?
Well, the twenty-six thousand, that's his half.
Yeah, yeah, but you're saying that the budget was a hundred and sixty-two and he only spent eighty-seven.
Yeah. Cause he hasn't got great deals yet.
Over. God, if we budgeted for him under the premise that if we knew what we needed, but we're still waiting.
Oh, that is pretty long. Thanks for the, oh, information.
There's a lot to look at on this budget sheet.
Yeah, there's a lot to do.
I could, I could believe it. What's, what's B C revenue on the second page for revenue security? On the, I'm looking at the amendment.
That is who grabs?
Oh, okay, okay. So he actually ran over by four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Everything was pretty.
Further questions on the year-end budget amendments? We have a motion to approve those. Motion, do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the year-end budget amendments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion is carried. First to the year business.
Get going on them? Can you just get going on them? I guess I can start with the first one, if that's okay.
Go for it.
I'll make a motion that the entire board meet on all matters pertaining to the various offices and undertakings unless authority is granted to an individual member of the commission to act for the board in that the county auditor is authorized to pay all regular bills such as monthly salaries, lights, heat, water, telephone bills with discounts along with mountain lakes, human service zone, and indirect cost bills when received.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, uh, to approve that motion, which I'm not gonna repeat. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion is carried. Uh, the second motion is pertaining to, uh, approval of payments of two thousand or more. Uh, is that something that we want to keep at two thousand? Or after all this inflation, is probably reasonable to, to up that a little bit?
Used to be a problem, right?
Does the auditor have any? Cause we moved it because of the auditor. Did we move because of the auditor or just because we follow it?
No, we, we changed. I mean, it was.
Okay, the auditor doesn't really care where we have it.
No, okay, no.
What do you?
Just as long as we follow this.
Yeah.
You all right with it? Is it like two thousand then sufficient?
I mean, you, you could, you could maybe, but like computers and things like that. I mean, it's.
Two thousand bucks is getting tight.
Yeah, it's either two thousand or plus, I mean, it's.
But then we usually go on it. Your stuff, aren't we?
Well.
Well, you do if it's over two thousand.
Yeah.
My, my thought on it was always that we've already approved the budget. And if they're staying within the budget and they're purchasing something that was included in the budget, shouldn't we really be micromanaging down to that level? Of, you know, no, you can't, can't spend anything more than two thousand dollars. Well, it's already been approved once at the budget hearings and. But, uh, that's just me.
I'm guessing the thought always was that we just wanted to have a check to make sure nobody buck wild and decided, well, I'm gonna buy four new computers or something. And their budget's all of a sudden blowing.
Right. Quite an argument to get it to two thousand.
It did. It did. I remember, yeah.
I mean, I'd be fine with going a little higher just because the inflation number is, you know, about to twenty-five hundred or something like that.
Okay.
I just don't wanna hand tie people, so.
And you wanna make that a motion?
I'll make a motion that, uh, no county official or employee should order equipment supplies or services amounting to twenty-five hundred dollars or more without permission of the county commission, except for emergency supplies that that department supervisor would deem necessary to authorize.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to, uh, approve that and increase by five hundred dollars, the amount required, uh, before you have to come up with a county commission. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion is carried. Next one is that Ramsey National Bank, Bremer Bank, Westman Bank, all bills like the designated repositories for rent, uh, depositaries for Ramsey County.
Second.
We have a motion in several seconds. This one's very popular. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion is carried. Next one is that the Ramsey County Treasurer will be authorized to invest county funds as soon as available and to cash in investments when necessary. Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion is carried. The last one is to set the amount of five thousand dollars for the county's fixed assets.
And that's the auditors like that.
State auditors.
That's the auditors?
Who's approved?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion is carried. That wasn't bad. Kevin?
Okay, to start off, uh, the update on the U S Highway two expansion project out east of town. I think most of you are, you know, and I did there. Uh, when I talked to Ed, we talked about getting a meeting together with, uh, DOT and whoever else. And I did talk to Wyatt about that. And he's gonna talk to the engineering firm. And the gal is watching over the engineering firm and then our district here. Put a meeting together, uh, when or whatever. You have to see what their schedules were like first, so. Don't have a day to consider or time to set for that yet, but it's in order.
Do you have a name on that example?
She was the one sending the emails.
She from the state.
Yep.
Well, if we.
I think if we need, we'll go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, the only thing I thought is if there's no movement that you see on this, you know, we're not hearing anything, we're not hearing anything, we're not hearing anything. All right, let, let's bring this back up to what, two months at the longest?
Oh, yeah, no, it might be this one.
You know, but, but just so that this doesn't run away. Cause that sort of thing happens all the time. Oh, sorry, we were gonna do it, the timeline's so shot, we're just gonna have to do this project the way we're doing it.
Was there anybody at the state, from the state at that meeting in, uh, High Plains that night? You know?
The, the one that I missed? No, the Wyatt, I talked to Wyatt and he said.
He wasn't there. I didn't see him.
No, he said he had something going on with his kids.
He probably. Blame him for not coming. He probably get lamb lopped in the equation.
I don't recall seeing anybody from the state there, I don't think.
Not the, not our district, no. The gal that sent the email was probably there, but. I'm guessing. She's kind of riding her, whatever the term is, over the engineering firm.
She's good, from Bismarck, you think?
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, I think it's good. I would go with. It was, it was guided on a face-to-face with Wyatt and the gal. But he also was real often.
If we don't, it's not gonna change.
Right.
We're not even gonna have a chance.
Right. We're gonna try to set up for one of our meetings or?
Um, we could. I mean.
Well, we could probably have a special meeting.
That's what I'm thinking. We've got a fifty minute schedule. That's the only thing that really would hinder it. The engineering firm, when we hear the date of our meeting.
No, yeah, I think whatever, whatever works for them. I mean, it's important enough. We're gonna have to just hope to have a special meeting whenever they have time to make work.
Advertiser or whatever.
Yeah. You're on, all right, you're up. We got an engineering firm. We're gonna make sure we have the state there too.
Yeah, exactly.
They're the ones that are making the call.
Yeah, and I'll mention to Wyatt that maybe even somebody higher up than her, I mean, somebody you know.
Would it, would it be reasonable to invite some amount of representation from the city also to this hypothetical meeting as we set it up?
I did mention it to Mike, but I didn't say tell him about this meeting yet. Well, that's fine. So I could do that.
I think it'd be reasonable to at least have Mike there just because, I mean, they're gonna have, if, if, if they do go along with the the concept of frontage roads and stuff, it's gonna be a question of who's gonna have long-term oversight on the frontage roads. They're gonna, they're gonna have to have some discussion on that too, because I mean, yeah, there might be a deal where the county and the township might be able get the state to kick in some money, but if they grow out east, they're gonna have to take on some additional pavement, so.
Happening, it's not here.
Yeah, it's gonna happen, so.
That's a huge part of the state.
Yeah, so they're gonna have to have at least a little bit. I mean, they don't have as much skin in the game probably, but at some point they might.
Right.
It's good to have somebody there at the table with us.
It goes for like future development or if the city expands that way, or at least they're on the same page.
Oh, yeah, cause I'm sure, you know, like when, I don't know exactly how that works, but the city has design specs for how they wanna put in there. You know, for lining up the frontage roads and all that kind of stuff too, so I'm sure they'd like to see exactly what they plan on doing if they decide to.
They might want a sewer line or water line or whatever.
Yeah.
Talking about, oh.
It's good to have them at least have that discussion so they know what's going on.
Totally. Well, I guess just keep us informed on that and let's make sure that we don't end up behind the eight ball at the state proactive, so if we're not hearing anything, let us know and we can start to get squeaky wheels.
Sure.
One thing I will mention is typically when the state will build the frontage roads, but they want somebody else to take over maintenance from that day on.
Well, I think that'd be reasonable.
Yeah. I mean, that, so that's something they're gonna want from, and, and they're gonna want the county to be the first option.
Right.
To take over.
Getting them built is gonna be half the battle first. Yeah.
It's gonna be right away purchase and I mean, it's, it'll be a big project, but. I'm sure it's over.
And depending on how far they're gonna go too, you know?
Right. Yeah, there's some areas or more, like the sewer area, they probably wouldn't put a front road through.
You know? It would be a good start anyway, for sure. Then you would, then you probably wouldn't have all those access points.
Right.
You've got four access points compared dumb and down to two access points.
Like, uh, sales ring and then what do they use to pursue their own now?
Who?
Sales ring and all the other resources along that?
Um.
They're just, they have their own radio?
I think so. That'd be your guess. I mean, they're, they're knowing clubs, they have their own systems and Ackerman has their own system.
That city sewer stops, that's, that's right, I believe.
Okay.
I think.
Right.
Cause I think they had to extend it when they put in the travel plaza out there because we're on city sewer out there.
You're on city sewer.
Believe so.
Water, yeah.
I believe so.
So that'd just be rural utilities and I don't know how it works. I'm hard out there as well.
That was, that was part of the reason that we wanted to annex it at that point, because then you could do city sewer versus then you would add a drain field and all that kind of stuff with that big system. It would have been a lot, so.
I'm sure the hospital was that third idea right there.
Oh, yeah, that's all that, that'll all have to get annexed and intended in the city, all their services, I'm sure, so.
If I remember correctly, a person who put that A-tram up the house, so he hooked up the subway system. So it must be something out there.
Interesting.
I honestly don't know where that place.
Yeah, the system is, it's gonna have to handle it too. Hospital will be a big deal.
That would be a city center, but, yeah.
On the sewer and water deal, yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think a good point to make to the engineering firm and the state is, you know, there's been developments since they did their survey and all their looking and data collecting. So, you know, there's been changes since then.
What's their survey been, three years ago?
Just this summer, really, you know?
But I would remember looking, what's, has their survey been goes three years ago, but it's been a while, it's been three years out there. Well, the whole thing kind of started even back when we were pushing to put the turn lane in on ad mining, and then they decided, okay, let's look at the whole corridor, and that's been, what, five years ago, they started at least looking at it. With the intent that eventually when they did the rebuild, we're gonna do some changes. Well, it's been a while since they've been working on it. I mean, it's been taking shape, but yeah, there's been a lot of development on this. Five years, it runs with open five, six, seven, one.
What about five years since you put that turn lane in?
It's, yeah, I would guess it's.
Well, I believe I love it. Really, it was right when I got on the commission.
Yeah, probably been solid five years.
Hard to believe it was.
Not three.
So I guess when I hear more about that, I'll let you know, and I'll talk to Glassguard about the same. Having someone there too. Good. And I'll stay on top, but hopefully it's just a month there.
I think it's a good move, I'm part of it, get involved and for the safety of everything.
Right. I think there'll be a comment period for the government agencies yet also. This was a public comment period that ended this twenty-nine.
Another one hurt to be out on that either.
Right, exactly, yes. Since the city didn't comment on this public comment period. You know what I'm saying? They're, they're awaiting till their opportunity for the government agencies or whatever they're called, maintenance, some management presentation, management people.
And there's a webinar the thirteenth, is that correct?
Yep, the webinar is the thirteenth at one o'clock, fairly short, so less than an hour. Basically, they're just gonna go over what was talked about at the public input meetings. And I go from there. I don't know if you, that was an email, if anybody's interested in getting in on that. Obviously, sit down. Okay, and they also, I already. Okay, last fall I had, I ordered three different culverts for county projects for next summer and we're using that, our county roads are using that plastic line. No culvert's plastic line, so. They showed up the other day and the cost of those was ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. I think we'll be approved and, uh, I think.
How much do they run for a culvert? That plow to texture?
They're about thirty percent more, but they last thirty, longer also.
Did we get a second on that? Did I miss it? Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve paying for the culverts to the tune of ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye, or is this a roll call? It's a roll call.
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Lightfoot?
Aye.
Bolt?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
And also we have a couple invoices that are over two thousand from K L J Engineering. Uh, one was for the thing of total A project for eleven thousand, eight fourteen forty-seven cents, and the other was for the bridge project for eight thousand, one sixty-seven thirty cents, for a total of nineteen thousand, ninety-one, seventy-seven cents.
Motion to pay those.
Ooh. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to pay K L J for a couple of different things to the tune of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. Roll call, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Bolt?
Aye.
Lightfoot?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
And also I do order carbide cutting edges for our plow trucks this time, not the motor area for the trucks. Three sets of those of cost, I didn't know what the freight was gonna be, so it's gonna be around forty-four hundred dollars.
So this is for all the trucks then?
Yeah, it'll be a one set for each truck. They usually last about three years and we'll.
Cause they're carbide.
They're carbide, but we like to keep a set or two on half because it takes forever to get it.
Right, yeah.
That forty-four hundred just an estimate, Kevin, or is that?
It is, I don't know what the freight was.
Ooh. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for counted orders of carbide cutting edges. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion is carried.
We have a couple other things, um. We had to invoice the pay on our local share of the bridge inspection, which is only like seven hundred and fifty dollars, but along with that, they send a sheet that we need to sign saying we use. But we didn't use federal dollars for our match money and we have to explain where that money came from, so there's a signature on there from the chairman and the auditor, so I need a motion for the chairman and the auditor to sign that.
Okay.
Motion in a second to sign off on local share of the bridge inspection cost. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion is carried.
And the last thing I have is, once you probably read that blue letter that comes out for Association of Congress is see Aaron Burris got appointed as the new executive director. Just wanted to bring, you know, that in, start to make or something like that. That's who got chosen. That's all I have left here for Paul.
I want to make a quick update on the county, the bridge project. Before, um, we get the D S E comment back from the state, we got those final plans stamped here the next couple of days, so that's still, we'll stay in the park opening and then bridge project, we got the draft, environmental documents, the mandatory review and plans. So we'll keep that in May opening.
Those put as on base for the summer then?
Both of those will be in the construction.
You do?
So all that. Thank you, Gavin. Please get up. We'll move on to unfinished business. Uh, we've got Ramsey County Planning Commission Board.
Um, neither parties are interested in surveys, so we put something out on Facebook page to
others.
Try to draw some interest.
Nothing yet?
Nothing yet.
So spread the word, in other words.
Yep. We'll put it on the, we'll put it, once you've got the website, yeah, then that's all.
Okay, well, we'll table that until the next meeting and hope we get some people. That was quite a bit to put in the paper.
Well, at this point, it doesn't hurt us. We'll give them a cost of some money.
Can you do that?
Up to you.
It's a legal pair.
Yeah.
Well, there's two positions also.
Well, you didn't have to have the legal pair.
Yeah, probably ready.
I'd make that a motion that we're advertising the Devil's Lake Journal, say, with all the positions.
Okay, we have a motion in a second that we open, uh, while we pay the Devil's Lake Journal to, uh, advertise for these two board appointments. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion is carried.
We'll shake the bushes though, too. Never hurts.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else in unfinished business, we'll move on to new business, uh, and approval of a rapid permit.
Ooh, second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed. Motion is carried. Visitors and delegations. First meeting of the year is kind of a short one.
Same, this is gonna be the shortest day they're gonna need to be on.
Yeah.
I know, we could talk for maybe an hour here.
Yeah. No visitors and delegations.
Do we go back out or not?
Then we'll, uh, go to portfolios and we'll start with Commissioner Brett.
Uh, not a whole lot to report. They talked to Sheriff Nelson yesterday, said everything's everything's fine. There's no catastrophes or emergencies, uh, going on and, uh, and he's still helping out with the administration of the L E C, helping Rob in that position and things are going smoothly there, so. They've been busy.
Very good. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, call up other jail and state lets go up to sixty-five prisoners now. We've been waiting three months and we get five for eighty. What do you go from, what do you, we're at fifty.
We did, we did get to sixty-five then.
Commissioner Frith told me this morning, we still have eight, I'm counting.
Yeah.
But it was a good.
Fifteen. So, yeah, they're, it's going pretty well. He interviewed captain's position, had four, they interviewed, they did it virtually and he was being offered to a guy from Arizona, a guy that lived in Valley, or Rapid City a lot. And his wife was applying for a head start job up here, so it sounded pretty promising. He probably or kicker on the money a little bit, I like it, gonna be agreeable, and I haven't heard of, they got him. Nope.
So things are better.
Yeah, pretty bit better, so. State seemed to be pretty positive when I heard, so. I think things are all better there. Even though the net. And what I got?
Very good, thank you. Mr. Bolt, I have nothing to report. We have a max as far as committees, we'll be meeting next week. Hopefully, we'll put it out. What's your life on?
Uh, let's see, uh, not a whole lot, county housing authority, um, haven't met since, I don't believe our last meeting, um, social services, we met, um, nothing too crazy to report there, um, just year end stuff, uh, they did really well on their budget this year, uh, so we were able to pin in, trying to remember if it was two or three vehicles, but finding vehicles just like for the sheriff's department or anybody was a brutal, they found them, but had to look far and wide, I think, Brown had talked about that previously, um, I just think what else we got? Forward to roundup, roundups today and tomorrow, I believe, so we get out here early enough, they might even still have some eggs or something over there, so we'll go grab some breakfast. Uh, it looks like a pretty good presentation the next couple of days, a lot of good information for the egg community and just for anybody that's interested in, you mentioned for the egg community, there's always presentations on horticulture and trees and gardening and all kinds of interesting stuff, so if you can go over and check that out, it's, uh, I don't have the times in front of me, but nine to three or so, I think usually is what the timeframe is, pre dinner and everything like that, so go check that out, but other than that, everything's going fairly smoothly.
I think the last presentation today is at three o'clock with Daryl Richardson.
Yeah, he's always very, very good, so.
And then tomorrow is two o'clock.
Yeah.
And that is, uh, Martin, Randy Martenson from marketing.
He's always really good too.
Yeah, he's good with management.
Yeah, it's, it's, it looks like a really good, uh, really good allotment of speakers this year and I think, if I remember correctly, Terry Grayore, Terry Grayware is gonna be talking too about the start of roundup and how they gotta go and stuff, that'll be kind of interesting too, because it's, what is it, twenty?
Forty years.
Forty years, forty years, I was thinking twenty-five or something, yeah, it's been forty years that this has been around and boy, it's an invaluable resource for just seamless, you know, giving yourself a little continuing education because you only learn a little bit every year, so. Overtrack it up. Other than that, I think that's pretty much all I have at this point.
Very good, uh, I don't think I have anything to, to report, it's been very quiet since our last meeting in the courthouse. The only thing that I have is more of an announcement, which is I'm not gonna be here next meeting. And, uh, not even gonna call in.
Where are you, where are you going?
Maui. Yeah, so I've got better things to do the next meeting, so, uh. Very good, so hopefully, uh, Commissioner Lightphone can take the reins. And, uh, make sure that you go on the Wednesday after, Wednesday morning after, go to Coffee Time Farm too, just not hauling into that either.
Make sure you find your way back. I guess, I guess I would send a shout out and a big thank you to Kevin and Espru for the roads after this last snowstorm over the Christmas holiday, that was, uh, we had a lot of snow and, uh, no complaints, so you guys must have been out there.
Very good. I was, I was gone and I came back, I was surprised that I even drove all the township roads back to go pick the dog up and stuff and everything was nice and clean, it was, everything looked really good.
You guys must have got out there and got after it, because it looked really good.
I get to start over. Problem was snow, it never, start it over.
But thank you guys, job well done, appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, is there anything else for the good of the order? And we are adjourned. Nice job on a thirty-five minute meeting.